Our guests, thank you all so very much for coming this afternoon. This is the Columbus Municipal School Board's special meeting. Today is May 23rd. It's approximately 5:35. This meeting is officially called to order. We do have a quorum present. We have with us to my left Dr. Cynthia Brown. This is Talisa Young, Dr. Joe Schumake, and myself, Yvonne Cox. Mr. Sparks is in route, but he's leaving the office a little late due to employee issues. I offer the invocation. Would you please bow with me? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you. We praise you for bringing us here this evening together. Dear Lord, we pray that you just stay in the midst of our meetings. Give us a clear understanding and guide us so that we will make decisions that you are in agreement with. And dear Lord, that really helps our students as well as our community. This we ask in Jesus' name and His voice sake I pray. Will you please stand with me for the flag of allegiance? Flag is basically out there if we can turn it at 2:00 minutes. That you can see it out there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll move to item three, the adoption of our agenda, which is policy BBB, policy BCBG. I would like to add an item to the agenda. I'll make a motion. I'd like to add item for the summer hours. Can't do it. So at that time, at this time, we'll request the agenda to be approved as is. The motion has been made by Dr. Brown requesting a second. Second by Mrs. Young. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Okay? Maybe we'll take that up at another time. Moving on to...
Holly, this is a special call meeting. You can't add...
That's okay.
I want to make sure you knew we were...
Yeah.
Why we couldn't do it?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. It's good to have us legally in order. Moving on to the next item, which is the consideration and our discussion to approve CHS Boys Basketball Outstate Field Trip to Tuscaloosa, Alabama. Requesting a motion to approve. The motion is made by Mrs. Young requesting a second. Second by Dr. Brown. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on, the next item. Consideration and our discussion to approve CMSD SO Resolutions Designation and Architectic. Requesting a motion for approval for this contract. Motion is made by Mrs. Young requesting a second. Second by Dr. Schumake. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving on to the next item. Six. Consideration and our discussion to set a date and time for the board retreat work session for our strategic plan. And during this date and time, I'm going to also request and ask Dr. Tim Martin, who came and presented to the board for the strategic plan, that I'm going to see if he'll be available on this particular date to come back and guide us through this discussion for our strategic plan that we do have in hand. Do you have any suggestions of a date? Since we've been looking at this and going through different dates and things, does anybody have any suggestions that you are available on those dates?
How soon are you looking to?
Beginning of June. I would love for us to do this. I would really like for us to have the strategic plan reviewed, adjustments made, and completed by the end of July so that it will be on our district's webpage for July 1. The begin...
The end of June.
Yes, the end of June for July 1. That's the beginning of the next school year. And let's keep in mind that once we finish our part, School Board Association has to pull the document together. So they're going to have to have a week or so to do that.
On the Saturday?
What day?
The 11th or 25th?
The 11th or 25th?
The 25th is a little...
It's working for you.
The 11th, I have the new board member training.
That's what I should do. You'll be a new board. So the 11th. We're trying to get all of our board members as possible to be a part of this meeting, this training, this final strategic plan because it is for the next five years. You all may want to do a evening. Doesn't necessarily have to be a Saturday.
What works for you, Schumake?
I have mine. Probably more flexible than anybody else. So I'm just... I'm being flexible myself. I've left this open for this.
Both of those days. Your first Saturday.
You prefer Saturday.
Saturday morning.
Saturday good mornings will be that. So that would be the 25th.
That will be the 25th. Do we need to table this until Mr. Sparks gets here or...?
Well, to be honest with you... We need to go on and do something because we tabled this before I can get him on the phone. I'd rather do it that way if you all don't mind. For us to go...
We can get set if we... Once he comes.
Yes, sir.
Right next meeting is what I mean. Change that day for next meeting.
Oh, okay.
If for some reason it doesn't work, you can always...
I'm thinking that date is pretty good with him. I don't know. I've heard several dates.
Okay, so the 25th.
All right, you all good with the 25th? That laid off.
Nobody mentioned the...
What time?
I can't, the 18th. That's going to be...
23 is good.
I mean, y'all can...
She can't do it.
I can't do the 18th or the 4th. I'm out of town most days. But if you, y'all go without me, it's okay.
No, we're going to look at the 25th. And by the time the year is going on over into July, we'll get it. So, you know, we'll work with what we have. The 25th is appropriate. I'm believing Mr. Sparks will probably be out of town on the 4th. I'm thinking that's his day for being out of town. He wants us to go on and set it for this date and then see when he comes in. Mr. Humphrey?
Not scheduled for the 4th. But June... Do we have a retreat on the 4th?
No, we sent out an email trying to schedule it for the 4th. But two of our board members weren't able to attain. So we decided to take it up when everybody is here. The time Dr. Schumake suggested, 9:00?
That's good.
9:00 is good with me. So that'll be the 25th at 9:00. And we'll do it here in the small boardroom.
Are we going to take action and set it for that date or are you going to issue it as a special call?
I'm going to issue this as a special call meeting.
That way in case that thing's not...
And then we can just set, go with it from there. Okay? Thank you. All right, we're moving on. So now we'll move on to consideration and a discussion to approve specific items. Included for discussion would be item A capital improvement, Mr. Steven Little. Thank you, Mr. Little. Good seeing you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Last time we met, we were talking about the parking lots at the high school and at the football stadium.
Yes, sir.
Last thing that we got, I'm going to start with the high school. Y'all still have y'all's copies from last. Need that to...
No, sir.
There was no, there were no attachments.
I think it might have been that though.
Okay. It should all be... Anyway, it's what it was. And this has been a while back when this was done. And it was, it was just the parking lot to the east end of the high school. The McKeller side, the other side is all concrete. That is only asphalt. There's holes all out in it. So...
Y'all visualize what he's saying since you don't have the documents with you.
And I, when I go to the other one, I'll pass this one and y'all can... Now I know what it says. The east side has potholes, asphalt's busted, and all kinds of places where the students park. Those prices that are on there are several years old. And I talked with Kevin Stafford a while back. And he said, "Look at about a 15% to 18% price increase from what those prices are right there." What I have done over the past little while is I bought some slag. And we have came through and we have filled those holes in. Got them smoothed out so nobody's running through all the potholes and all that. That parking lot seriously needs some work done to hit. And like I said, that, those are the numbers that were presented a while back. And that's this whole parking lot. The section up in here is not bad, but this main road coming in, and there's potholes all over the place out in here. So we just filled them in with slag, smoothed them out, and did the best we could with that.
Show me on here when you first entered from these. Is this, is this it?
Coming here, this road is pretty good. There were several potholes through here. We actually filled them in with concrete, smoothed them out. This section is good. It's not anything bad. But this whole section right here is pretty much slag now. There's potholes, various potholes out in here. Come off of this road and you turn in, this whole area is busted up. So we have filled all of that in. Just bought several loads of slag.
Yeah, I could tell.
Put it in just to smooth it out so you're not going to...
You did a great job filling it in and smoothing it out to me, you did.
Well, that's...
Filling it in, so...
About the best we got right now until, you know, decision's made with... Because the whole thing needs to be torn up and redone.
I saw it. And you said it was a 15% increase, change to 18?
Yes, 15 to 18 on those prices. I think that was in 18, somewhere around in there.
Yeah.
Could be now.
It will be because, you know, when we was talking about it, again, it was when the company was here doing the scenery. So they'd have to make a special trip to come in now.
Yep.
So when do you think you can give us a price? Because we can't move until we get some figures.
Well, I'm going, I'm going to be honest with you. We've gotten prices several times. And when I called and asked for a price, they want to know is the money they... Because they spent a lot of, a lot of time.
What amount?
Just on that, they go, "Well, that one is basically right around $200,000."
So it's hard enough that we're going to have to bid a little bit.
Yes.
But maybe just we just split out the bids.
Okay.
Split it out for the...
Put it out for the...
Put it out for the... Yeah, yeah. And y'all could take that action tonight when...
Because this is where we always get tripped up.
Because that way you will get firm price from somebody.
Yeah.
I don't know because the last time we put it out for bid, you only had one...
That was for the football field. We only got one bid. That was going to be my next before I go to next.
That may be. Maybe that we could bid them all together. Both on that problem. Maybe it's a total project. As long as your kids will be tracking typically, wouldn't you agree?
I agree. Yeah.
Okay, so from looking at this that we have this time...
Okay, that...
From the last time, or whenever, or one of the times, right?
Yeah, this is the latest quote. What you're looking at right there is for the football field, parking lot. And I'll pass this around so you can refresh your memory on that. What we did is we broke that up. You have a full price for the whole thing done at one time. This was the last one that was bid, six, eight, nine months ago or something like that, that only one person bid on, Burns Dirt.
And what was that total price? Oh, yeah, that's what we had last week.
Yeah, that's what you had last time. So what they did is they actually broke it up into three sections. The further south section, when you first come off of Warpath, they were going to come in to the left and put a road up through there, two cars wide so cars could pass. They were going to come up and they were going to pave the far south. Right there, you know, if you come in straight and you turn left, don't turn to go into Salem, come in straight, turn left, from about there to the fence where you went out, where you can go out in the back. That's the further south part of that parking lot. Where you come in to the football field and buy your tickets. That...
I guess I've never been in that one.
Come off of Warpath. If you just drive all the way to the very back. You know what the field house is?
I call it the back way.
Okay, so that was the first phase. So they're going to try to get the road coming in and get that done. Then the second phase was going to be, and plus, let me back up. The intersection right there with the baseball and softball field was all torn up. So that was going to be all in the first phase. Then you had, the second phase would be the middle section, which is, you know, the price goes down as you go because the sections start getting smaller. And then the third one was down towards Warpath where you turn and go towards Salem. So that was actually split up into three sections if you didn't want to do the whole thing at one time. So that's, that's the last one that was bid that we only got one bid on.
So now, I'm speaking on what I'm thinking. Okay? Would it be workable? Right? If we, and we're preparing for budget now, right? All right, so if, could we look at exactly taking it into three different phases? Because, but they can give the bid using all three phases. But we look at actually doing the work in phases according to our budget. Instead of waiting, trying to have the lump of money all at one time. Like we've been looking at it. Because we've been looking at it like, okay, that's that last line. Okay, that's too much. So then we don't do anything. So, but we have it in different phases, right? Is that, you know what I'm saying?
We have different prices for each phase.
So let's work on that as we budget it in as we go. Because at one time I was really hoping for some infrastructure money.
Well, the whole problem with that, we might not be able to hold a bid.
We can. We can. Okay.
Now, I mean, they'll bid it. It's going to be good for 30 days.
30, 30 to 45 days.
I was going to say they might do it this day.
It may be. It may, it may say on it. When I say that, it's a...
See, but if they, if they get to bid, fine. They can get the total bid. But the work can be completed in different phases. Kind of like that. We have to bid it back out. But Kevin Stafford actually presented it to us and doing it in phases. And I'm starting initially. Right, you know, we're looking at it like that, but we didn't do it.
You could do it in four, actually. Do these three plus the high school. Four, four, four bid items.
Four bid items.
And y'all could decide, hey, we've got enough money to do the high school plus two of the other ones are the big one. Or we've got enough money to do it all.
Mr. Little, what do you suggest at this point?
I mean, I'd love to see them paved and get it. But to me right now, I think the high school is the bigger problem. Because what I've done at the, at the football fields, I brought in some crushed up asphalt, some crushed up concrete. And I spread it out. And even where the buses were sitting, there were some big holes there. We filled all of that in too. But...
Will that get us through the season, football season? What you brought...
I'll have to put some more in there. Probably the more traffic it gets, it starts pounding back down again. And then I'll just have to call and get some more loads brought in, spread it back out. I mean, but, but the problem is you're just putting gravel on it and you're just kicking a can down the road. But the parking also is, because you know, when it's, when it's paved, it's going to have parking spots. And, you know, people just, they're just parking all over the place. And, you know, it just, like I say, we're just, just patching right now. And as it, you know, as people drive over it and it starts wobbling, bouncing and stuff, and, you know, getting holes back in it again. So we're just constantly, when I see it and it starts getting bad, I just have some more gravel brought in.
You haven't been doing that now for...
Since I've been... Three years.
You've been patching it in the last while. And when the rain comes in, the way it's been raining, it washes all of that up. And there you are restarting it again. So, Mr. Humphrey, what were you saying? That we should do it if we do in four different phases?
Just, you've already got this bid at three. And just rebid it. You stay at the high school too is another... What, you can alternate off the one or two or bid with...
Yeah, we had the base bid, which was...
You had alternate one, two, and three.
Yeah. We had phases for the...
The base bid, and then one, two, and three?
Yes, we did. That's what I...
All right, any other questions? Do y'all have any questions? Do you remember the numbers on the, on the parking lot at the high school?
I have my piece of paper.
I passed it around.
There it is, right there.
It was two, it was three. This is it, right?
That's up to... And this is the house.
Okay.
That was in 2018.
Is that number...
It's a little over 200, 200, 200.
I guess you're probably looking closer to 300.
And that was, that was just a budget number. If you read on there, he said, you know, go ahead and budget about 250. But that was...
250 for our comps.
I think closer to 3 now. Right, so. It don't have asked my wants to work.
Any other questions? I'm sorry. We've been discussing this for a while. It's not getting any better. It gets more and more...
What is the next step then? So we're all...
We can advertise for bids.
Yeah. Most, you know, we advertise for bids for the high school parking lot.
High school and...
Base bid one, two, and three. Right. And base bid one, two, and three.
Or rebids.
I'm sorry. The, all right, I'll move right along. I request an emotion.
Mr. Humphrey, I'm sorry.
Okay. I didn't realize that's what she was doing. All right, the motion is made by Mrs. Young requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Brown. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. So we will...
We need that for to get our...
Rebid. Okay, here we go. I'm going to answer how you did. I'm sorry.
And put more Freon in it. That is on the plan with our Esser money, to have those replaced. We have two units that are running, and I gave instruction to keep the doors shut. I went in there that morning, and it was cold in there. We went in there at two o'clock, and all the doors were open. So I said, get the doors back closed, because we only have two units running. And it just wasn't, it wasn't done, you know? It was cold in that morning, you'd have to put a jacket on to go in there. But if they don't...
It was unbearable.
I understand, because I came up there, and I actually got on the roof to make sure that the two that we had, that they were still running. I was up there at six thirty, uh, checking on them, because I got calls on them. But that, we're just waiting on the Esser money, because those units are original units. And a coal for just one of them is probably gonna be anywhere from six to nine thousand dollars. You can get a new unit for probably fifteen, fifteen to eighteen. That's just for the unit, that's not putting it up there, because that is gonna, that's in our Esser plan, to replace those units. There and the auditorium is one of the deals, but we're just waiting on that.
Do we have a timeline on that yet, or we don't know?
Well, you got, you get ready to do your architect's hour. That's one of the things that he's gonna have to, uh, do a scope of work for, because that's gonna be, that's gonna have to be bidded out as well. That's one of those things, that the cost of it is gonna exceed the amount that you can just purchase at EC units. So they're gonna have to bid it out. So hopefully, they'll give, he'll get rolling on it.
Alright, Mr. Taylor.
You're gonna make a miracle.
That approved, so I'll entirely, he was always talking to us.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate you, sir. I add a little something in there. They say it's going to work, that, uh, the architect will be getting to us, so I made a note of that. Moving right along. The, uh, for item number B, the I, uh, name of the Hunt facility. Uh, the reason why this is on the, on the agenda. And this is something that I want us to just give thought to, and, uh, so that we won't overlook the need to do it. And, uh, the same justification behind the need for us, uh, naming Union Success Academy. Uh, when this, when we do begin, um, the rebuild for Hunt, as the rebuild is taking place. Uh, our community as well as ourselves, we should refer to the building that's being replaced by its official name. What it will be, and we already know that it's Hunt. You know, it's been Hunt all of our lives. But at the same time, um, there are like other Hunt facility, Hunt Education Center, but it's centered around the education. I'm, I'm, we're aware that we will have, um, different, um, I'll say MUW, EMCC will probably be doing something in there. Um, one of our greats from our schools will be moving into there, so it'd be educational wise. Uh, we have it set up in our, in our... We have it set up where it will be, uh, available for a community with, um, auditorium, the gymnasium. Right, are you all following me? Okay, anyway, the, the gymnasium, we have, um, so many different ways that Hunt would be actually used. And the, the reason and the justification for the use of it, and where it will be sitting right there in the center of, um, Columbus. To me, it should be a focal point, but at the same time, it should be a center of growth for the whole community around it. And if it's used that way, if we began now selling the building for this particular purpose. Um, remember a few conferences we've attended? They're always saying that we are our own, what, our district advocates ourselves, we are our spokespersons. So when we build it through word of mouth, then that's how it happens. So when it is in place, everyone will know exactly why that building is there and what it will be being used for. Any comments at this time?
The only thing I can think of is, I mean, it's been Hunt Middle School, it was Hunt High School. So what is it now?
Hunt?
Just Hunt. Okay, that's back to me, I just want to make sure.
It was, well, from my understanding was, it was Hunt, and it, it was used for, um, the alternative school was there. Uh, some of the, um, I remember special education department was there, uh, upstairs, and then they moved that department over to central office. Um, anybody else can think of anything else that Hunt was being used for?
Yeah, but essentially, I've been on the board.
She's, I think you're talking about going forward.
Going forward.
It says it's gonna be MCC. The MCC is gonna be there. No, I was thinking of Scott. Yeah, and I, yes, it's gonna be both, it's gonna be multiple things there, right?
Yes, sir, that's, that's what was presented to us.
What about Hunt, the First Applied Education Center?
Hunt Education Center?
Hunt, the first, the first advice, mo- multiple things.
No, I understand, I understand. I mean, I, I guess the, what is the term of the rest? No. I'm fine with just the word Hunt, not a problem.
Hunt School, with Scott, you know, Hunt Campus is what we've participated in, the entry stuff, that we've been dealing with, Hunt School, Hunt Campus.
We have to make a decision, no?
Yes, because we got, oh, I forgot, the museum will be back open there. There's so many different things that's be, that will be going on in Hunt. Diversity, diversity. You said Education Center? You said just plain Hunt?
Does that still have a gym?
Yes, ma'am. I got, um, some information here that you can carry with you, on all of that. I've been meaning to get it to you, so you can share, share it with us over here. So what do you think?
Your name? I'm still thinking.
I mean, the shorthand is Hunt, we know, I know that, it's, it's just what the...
You could very well say Hunt, and then have something small with it.
He said, he should have just given thought today, so we're just thinking about it.
Alright, we'll move on right on. Now we'll move to item C, if no other discussion on that. We'll move on to item C, the Hunt Facility Rebuild. Mr. Taylor Gill, thank you for coming.
Yes, ma'am. So really just kind of giving up today and give the new board member sort of where, where we are.
Yes, sir.
Where we've been, where we're going. Refresh everybody's memory, I wrote some...
Thank you.
Copy what we presented before, remembering what it'll look like, and... Core plans.
Thank you.
So... So this is where we hope to be standing. Also had, have a timeline, this timeline, kind of just, kind of yuckings. This timeline started in February twenty-third, February twenty-third, twenty nineteen, in 2019. Kind of kind of just recap where, where we've all been. It was done for the, uh, federal court, and I just kind of updated it.
Thank you.
Updated it, just kind of, out of detail toward the end, but I just kind of refresh everybody's memory on where we are. So, but, so as far as the timeline and where we are, you know, there, there's, there was, there, there's three, three players, uh, here besides, besides Columbus Municipal School District. There, there's insurance company, there's archives and history, and then there's, uh, there, there's FEMA, which, which money is funded through, through MEMA. So the first step was insurance, and insurance took, when we were, came on board, beginning of twenty twenty, we were hired, uh, almost immediately, I guess in March, I guess, Chris, I guess in March, they filed a federal lawsuit. So as soon as we came on board to get it fixed, they filed a federal lawsuit. I think they probably had a feeling that we're gonna do things right, and, and not just take their, just take, just take what they were gonna give us. I think that's probably why they went ahead and filed. But anyway, so it took from March of twenty twenty through the end of last year, twenty, uh, twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, to, to get the insurance resolved. FEMA would not do anything until the insurance is all, FEMA pays after insurance pays. So FEMA basically would not do, do anything until, um... Uh, so FEMA wouldn't do anything there, so we got the insurance resolved, they did about the end of the year when it resolved, we got the settlement, got it signed, then FEMA took on. So where, where FEMA was the hazard mitigation or replacing all the windows. FEMA offered hazard, hazard mitigation, which they'll pay to replace all the windows for the whole school. You know, the, the annex building and the two-story country building, almost entirely, then exterior skin is almost entirely windows. It's a huge, a huge benefit to the school district to do that. Uh, FEMA pays seventy-five percent, MEMA twelve and a half, so district only pays twelve and a half percent, get all new windows for the whole school. Instead of the single pane glass, it's insulated, uh, energy efficient, impact resistant, you know, it's really a, really bargain for the district. But to do that, we had to get Archives and History's approval, and Archives and History, they don't like replacing original, you know, features, even though the, the windows that we were replacing with will look just like the old ones. If you rode by, Ms. Cox, and looked at the, the new windows that old windows, you, you wouldn't know the difference, but Archives and History, they just, they're just, but, but... So anyway, we had to appeal their decision, and we did that, I guess, I guess that was, uh... January, February, we did that. We finally, we finally filed an appeals letter, asked the district documentation, went back, got there, took more photographs, documentation. They finally said, okay, we can replace windows, so the big settle down. With that being, with, once we had Archives and History's approval and insurance settlement, we can move forward with FEMA. And so, as, as reported at last board meeting, uh, Ms. Cox, or the meeting before last, that, uh, FEMA had come back, and they had taken the insurance company's estimate and used that as a basis of funding, which basically gave us nothing. But we expressed, expressed our extreme displeasure, uh... The good news is, we had another conference call on Friday, and Dr. Dito was on it, Holly was on it, Dr. Labop was on, Holly was on it. Had eight, eight FEMA representatives and three MEMA, so that's eight, three, and those four, eleven, fifteen people? Got that right, fifteen people. FEMA's attitude i- is extremely, i- is totally different. They, they won't do anything they can to help us, like they basically, they said, I don't know how to put it, but they said, we want to say yes. We want, you, 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 you help us, and we will say yes, so they want to help us. Uh, Holly and Dr. Dito, y'all, y'all, y'all chime in.
It took a little bit of finagling, he had to ask about three times for them to send a site inspector out. The first two times, they said they didn't have the resources, and finally, they said they would send someone. Um, because it's even in their report, that the reason they didn't go inside the building to make, um, educated estimates towards the repair, is because the building was already moldy at the point that they had come out. There were notes of the reasons why they didn't enter the facility to make their own list of what would be repaired, and instead just took the insurance company's word for it. But they have, um, agreed to send a site personnel to inspect it.
Did we have anything in writing from there, that they're gonna do this?
We got our meeting minutes back today.
Yeah, and I have not read those yet, but I'll, I'll, I'll get those and get those in. But, but they, the, the attitude was, was, was with MEMA was a hundred and eighty degrees different. It was, what can we do to help you? We want to help you, we want to say, we want to say yes.
Or somebody got their attention.
Right. The thing that we emphasized though, was the fact that they used the references of the insurance company to come up with their figure. And the insurance company had already no balled us from the jump. So we, that was one of the aspects that we brought out, where how are you using those figures? When we know what the insurance company is already trying to do for the school district, and that's nothing. So they, they thought about that, and then they looked at what we had already brought in place. We've had the scope of work, we've had, you know, bids to be given to them, so they knew what we were up against. And the, the way the figures are so different, you know, from what we proposed as far as what it's gonna take to get this place fixed, as to what the insurance costs, that's, is about an eight million dollar difference.
And then when they have hard numbers, competitive bids, but yet it took entry companies.
Right, well, we know all this, I mean, that's, that's news from two months ago.
But, 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 but the news is, is that's our call on Friday, that, that, that they, they have assigned one person to work with me. I asked them, if we have one person that I can just communicate with, one-on-one, you know, I did, you know, we went through after Hurricane Katrina, Coach went through, did dozens of projects. And, you know, sometimes we would agree to disagree, but at least we could sit each other face to face, talk about it, go over drawings, see my point of view, see his. We'd always agree, you know, ninety-nine percent, we'd always agree and come out with it. And then so they've signed one person, they've agreed to have a field representative come down. Uh, as far as the timeline, uh, what they've asked me to do... You know, we, we, we set out, we, we put out a huge set of documents, drawing specifications of to repair the Hunt School. But what insurance does is, they take each room, they, they take... The way the insurance does it, they take each room, they, they take that closet right there and it's like, oh, we need so many floor tiles in this closet, so many square feet of floor, remember, basically do something a whole differently. You know, we do, instead of doing one little room, we do the whole school, you know, we do flooring for the whole school, whole ceilings. And so they've asked that we go back and, and, uh, I gotta go back and analyze the insurance estimate. And compare it to ours. It's gonna take me some time to do it. It's just gonna take a lot of time to go back and get it to where, but they said, you know, you show us that, we want to say yes. So you show us. You know, where your scope matches insurance and then, but I, we agreed to do that. So we're gonna do that. It's gonna take, um. You know, as far as the timeline, FEMA said, once we get them their information that they will fast track it and have us a, a response in thirty days. The long part's gonna take me to go back and get all the information they need to go back and do it. So it's gonna take me a few weeks to do that. You know, not only did, not only did they ignore, I had done spreadsheet, how you see all the spreadsheets up there, that spreadsheet, and they just, just ignored it. I emailed it two months ago. Another spreadsheet I had done was all the code upgrades. In fact, I got this, I'll pass this out to y'all, the, um.
What they've asked him to do is make a correlation between what the insurance company said and what we know has to happen. And it's, it's a little bit of convoluted information because the reporting is different.
This is, this is just one of the many spreadsheets. And this is the code upgrades. And if you look at it, I don't know if ever tolls. The numbers of. Because it, it's, it's their, their template that I had to fill out. But if you add all these up, it's, it's, it's in the, it's in the millions. And, and they, they never even looked at it, considered it. I sent this back, I sent this back to them and they wanted it back in March, they asked for it. So I sent it to them in March. And these are all the code upgrades, whether it's ADA or building codes, heating and cooling, uh, life safety, whatever they are. I sent these, sent these, y'all, y'all packed copies of these. I sent out to them. And then all this should have been in, in addition to, to the insurance, uh, cost. And they, they just ignored it. So we, we, we spent a tremendous amount of time documenting everything. And FEMA had just ignored it and just took the insurance company's estimate and said, well, you know, that's what, but anyway, so, but get off that track. But they, they now understand. Uh, that what they did, uh, was, you know, won't work. I would say wasn't right, but it just, it, they, they realized, uh, the, the error in doing that. And so we're gonna work diligently as possible to get them what they need, how they want it broken out, analyze what actually the costs are. Because, because everything. You know, we had on the bid, we had fifteen alternate bid items, fifteen. And because of that, the reason we did that was to make sure everything was, was legit. That nothing we did to repair that Hunt School was anything more than, than a repair. It wasn't any touch my hall. It, it was just put it back like it was and to meet codes and standards. We had fifteen alternates. Anything that was in addition to repair what the original school was, like in the annex building, we had the, the, the adult education space back there. We had, we had that as an alternate bid item. So you could see, okay, that, that's an upgrade. That's the district. That's on the district. That's not on FEMA. That's a difference from what, what a school was used for. We had on the south side, we had some nice brick columns and canopies for a bus drop-off. That was something new. So everything that was anything that, that wasn't a repair or a code upgrade, we identified and broke it as an alternate. We had all, all the, all the kitchen equipment broken out as an alternate bid item. We had things, the insurance company had missed some doors and windows and things, all those were, so everything was broken out. The ADA issues with, with ADA restrooms and ADA drinking fountains, everything for the handicap, all that was broken out. So that everybody could see, you know, this is a repair cost, these are code upgrades, these are extras that, that insurance FEMA should pay for. We had fifteen, very complicated to make sure that we could break those out and justify all the costs. And none of that was, uh, none of that was looked at by, by FEMA. So. But then, but we do have their attention. And so the good news is we're going forward. Uh, and I would think, uh, you know, I, I always try every call, Holly, like you always try to get a timeline. You know, I know to Ms. Cox, you're, you're very anxious to, to, to move forward. And so we all are. Um, and so, um, FEMA said thirty days. I think it's gonna take me probably six to eight weeks to get the information they need to, to get, to get it everything together. It's just very time consuming. So I would think anywhere from sixty, ninety days, we'll have FEMA's response. Uh, and I do look forward to Papa's response. So their attitude was just, you know, you, you help us say yes, we, we want to say yes. So that was their attitude. We, we want to say yes. So very different.
So while we're waiting for thirty days?
Well, while I'm working all this work. Yeah, well, I, I gotta, gotta do all the prepared. I gotta break everything.
That part of it. I understand how many days he's talking about, but while we're waiting. My point is, okay, there's just dry time in there and I would like for us to, uh, a part of the timeline that you've already given us. Could you just add to it as a way of keeping the board informed as to what is going on? I mean, in depth going on, because usually, you know, you all have met with them and, and whatever, whatever. Okay, and, um. Dr. Dito was adding something earlier. I didn't, I didn't catch, I think he was cut off. But, uh, what we. I don't know how to say it any easier other than the fact that, okay, we've, I think we've been here heavily. You know, and, and, you know, you say thirty days, then you say, oh, ninety days. Still a long. And God, we'll be looking at this, uh, Thanksgiving.
Yeah, yeah. Well, FEMA, FEMA, FEMA told, you know, right, right now, right now, we're, we're, may, say we're June first. So FEMA told us thirty days. And then so there's thirty days plus how long it takes me to do all this work for them. Which I shouldn't, which, which they should be able to take our documents, our bid results, and they say, this is what it, they should be able to look at my drawings to Ms. Cox and say, yes, Taylor, your drawing represented fair. You know, it, it's, it's the repair. It's, it's fair. And it is a competitive bid. We take it, well, we'll go ahead and fund it. They want me to. I'll work on it. Believe me, I'm not, but it's the only way. So we show good faith and FEMA can show good faith. So, so. I'm hoping may, maybe I said sixty days for me, ma- maybe I can do it in thirty days. But it's, it's my, 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 so I would think by June, July. July first, so I would think, hopefully by the August meeting, we would have response back from, 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 so we're not Thanksgiving.
Sure FEMA was got interim office. They've already given us this number. So now for them to come back and justify this much higher number, they got to have something to hang their head.
Oh, yeah, they do, they do. And, and so, but so, but so, so I would hopefully, so, so, you know, I'm doing my best to get, to get everything to them, Ms. Cox, in thirty days. And they promised us they have a three-day response time. So we got, uh, June and July and August meeting. Hopefully we'll have a positive response. But we do have their attention. We do have somebody, a person assigned, I got who it was, Holly, that they said they would, that one person that was in Atlanta, I think, Region Four. Remember that fellow's name? But they did have one person.
I think Justin Gah was the one who said they were gonna assign someone.
Yeah, they're gonna have a field person to look at it, but then they'd have one of those people on the phone who's gonna be my contact. So we have a kind, one person and actually gonna have a person actually go in and look at it, which FEMA has not even done, is go, go into building and looked at it itself. So.
Quick question. They tell us, for instance, on the site inspector, will that, have they given us a timeline on when that person will come, will it be before your work is?
You remember Holly or Dr. Dito?
He, he, they said that they wanted to bring on him, the gentleman. They said they're trying to expedite this as soon as possible, um, because, um, because you asked that question.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. I'm, I'm, because I know.
She knew, he knew y'all was gonna ask.
First question they go ahead to me is, is, is your timeline?
Right. And, and they didn't want to say ninety days, but, uh, they did set up a meeting with him for the inspector to come and actually see the facility and come in.
Make sure they're up here, like walking with him.
Because they hadn't done that yet. Unbelievably, they made that decision without walking through the facility. So, so he really pushed on that. So we hope, we're, we're praying that we can get this done in the next ninety days or sooner. And when do you, when do you meet with the site inspector?
I'm gonna go back and, and, um, we got, we got, got our meeting minutes today. Oh, no, we got, we got the signing sheet. I didn't see the meeting minutes.
Oh, it might have been the signing sheet.
Signing sheet, yeah. So, but I, I. But it has all the, the names and I can, I can go back and look at it, but we'll go ahead.
Inspector will actually come here and walk through with you within this period of time that you're talking about.
That needs to happen like in a week or two.
Yeah, they said that within a week, two weeks.
Oh, that's all right.
Unbelievable that that hadn't happened.
Yeah. Yeah, I would love to walk through, because everything we've done is so transparent. Everything we've done is, is, you know.
Now, now that's thankful you did.
Yeah.
Within a week or two, if they have to come and walk through, that's sure.
Oh, yeah. Do that. I think what they see it, they can understand, uh, where, where we are.
And this time we do have one person.
Yes, yes, yes. I can't remember which one. I remember that said that the Region, Region Four representative out of Atlanta, remember, Holly, who that was? So I asked, I can't tell you, one person I could talk and talk to and communicate with and, and be a point-to-point contact and, you know, can only get anything.
Okay. Any other comments?
But they could.
Well, the contractor, it's, it's an excellent contractor. We got competitive bids. They still called me about, by texting me once every week or two. You know, telling them, you know, we got a FEMA call, we got a board meeting, and we just had to wait and see. Once FEMA, once FEMA agrees on the scope. Then if we had to rebid it, then FEMA will agree to the dollar amount. Once you, once you identify the scope of it and they agree, yes, the scope's in your documents. Then whatever it is, FEMA go back and, you know, they'll always have to update project worksheet, which update the funding. So, you know, whether they'll do that. Because the funding won't be capped. So, uh, I'd like to go ahead. We got a good contract. It'd be great to have him on board. Uh, but.
He makes honor his.
Yeah, he did. Yeah, he keeps calling me, texting. He said so far.
That will be for this time frame.
And the cost that's going on.
Yeah, so we, we just cross our fingers.
You have a question or a response? If, I don't know if you had a chance to drive by Hunt?
Not, not in a few weeks, but.
I was telling you earlier.
Yeah, go on, I'm sorry. Some of the, the, um, I don't know what you can call them, boards or, or. Someone that's holding stuff up is starting to fall. At the building, yeah, on the second floor.
I'm very, I haven't been that close to it.
Oh, those, those two by fours were there, just for, what they did, I'd definitely, I, I, I'll go by and look that way out, shall we like? But what they did after the, uh, um, tornado, emergency repairs, they. Unfortunately, they made a mistake with, with others of closing another plywood. Basically, they put, put a very flimsy roof. I wanted to ask about a day with first winds, was it right, Steve? And then, and then, and so it's still how this water coming in the building, and then they, they boarded everything with plywood, so there's no ventilation.
Right.
So you created this, this big explosion of mold and mildew. And so when we got some of the roofers, when they did re-root, they got the roofers for no charge, take that plywood off, and now we got ventilation through there. And those two by fours you're seeing are what they used to put the plywood on.
Okay.
Because now, now that the ventilation in there, the fresh air going through, and the, the big overhangs, the windows are broken out, but there's hardly any, any water getting in there at all, because the overhang protected. And so, but that was the biggest mistake they made was putting all that plywood on there. And once you got it off, it, you know, building was playing natural light and sunshine and ventilation. So. It was like night and day in there.
Okay, you know, but I, uh, I was speaking with, uh, Mr. Yule about, uh, before the board meeting begun, began was, um. I was telling him how nice it is over there now. And, uh, he, he knows how we drive by all the time. And, uh, the place, I drove by there the other day. I was sharing with, um, Doug Brown and him that I actually just stopped in traffic. They had drove up and move on. And, uh, real was actually, uh, over in that area that I know has been one about Christ. That, uh, it's actually, you drive by there, you'll see it. It's actually very nice over there now from the community, uh, school coming together. Um, I must say, I would guess helped. Thank you also very much, Dr. Schumake.
No, I mean, the complex goes.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna, well, yeah, uh, it was, well, they spearheaded it, I would say. Uh, she, uh. Mrs. Clinchdale and Mrs. Burdell, both those names, those Dells on there. But I was so grateful for that. But the mere fact now, you remember last year this time, reason why I brought it up, last year this time, when we would drive by there, all of us was feeling the same way. Even around the building itself. Thank you, Mr. Little. The building itself is looking decent, although it needs to be repaired. But it's looking like it's under repair. And beside it, you know, it reminded me when Hunt was open, really in the school, because that area over there used to be an outdoor classroom. Believe it or not. And, uh, the children were there doing a lot of activities. So whatever it will be used for, at least now we, there's evidence that we are moving forward. Thank you so very much for everything. I really appreciate you. You all have any other questions or concerns for Mr. Taylor? Or?
Switch it to yours.
Thank you very much.
No, it doesn't say.
All right, we almost have it.
I thought it was Justin Gah, but he said Region Four, that's Jerome Joyce.
Jerome did get on there. He got on late.
So.
I gotta get on it. I mind it's Trish. That's Trish.
We're through our last item of, of the evening, requesting motion to adjourn. Motion split. Question section. I'll make the second. Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. The second is made by Mrs. Young. Any discussion?
She got the list of them.
Don't we need to ask Mrs. Sparks about the date of the intended police election?
Send you her email.
Did we talk to it outside the boardroom?
Appreciate it. All right, the motion has been made, making second. Discussion's made. All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you all very much. Have a blessed evening.